If it's your custom, would you please join us in a prayer this evening if you'd stand and remain standing until we pledge allegiance? Father Murphy, good evening. From Holy Cross Catholic Church is going to lead us this evening.
Good evening, Father.
Good evening. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Blessed are you, Lord our God, Maker of the universe and Father of all. Guide the members of this council meeting and help them to serve the people of Vero Beach. Bring success to their work and reward them for the good that they do. Blessed are you, Lord our God, forever and ever.
If you'll join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this meeting to order October 15th, 2013, at 6:00 PM. The City Council Meeting, City of Vero Beach, Florida. Ms. Bach, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Winger?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mrs. Carroll?
Here.
Mayor Fletcher?
Mayor's here. Are there any agenda deletions, additions?
Staff has no changes.
Motion for approval?
All in favor? Aye. Passage unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Proclamations. Barbara Hoffman?
Yes, sir.
There she is. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. I have two of our board members joining me tonight. I'd like to introduce them, Donna Lindsay and Alan Shapiro.
Alan, good evening. Let me read this proclamation for you. Proclamation, whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for more than two decades. And whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, and whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American, and whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our family, our community, and our country, and whereas the cultural arts industry also strengthens our local economy by producing 346,000, whoops, 346 million in goods and services, big difference.
Yeah.
3.6 million in Florida sales tax, 500 million in Indian River County sales tax, 11.8 million in Indian River County property taxes, and a total economic activity annually, and by supporting the full-time equivalent of 1,769 jobs earning 59 million. Now therefore, I Craig Fletcher, Mayor of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Arts and Humanities Month in Vero Beach, Florida. Call upon our citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our nation, and especially encourage the greater participation by those as citizens taking action of the arts and humanities in their towns and cities. Do you have a few minutes?
Yes, sir.
Tell us about yourself and your website.
Well, I would like to thank you for proclaiming the month of October 2013 as National Arts and Humanities Month. Remember last year, the U.S. News and World Report study that appeared on MSN Money website cited that two of the cities in this area, Sebastian and Vero Beach, were cited of the area's cultural attractions and the largest number of highly educated retirees as the reason for being selected one of the top 10 desirable places for well-educated to retire. The author of the report said, "If you plan to enjoy intellectual pursuits, these communities offer art galleries, beautiful scenery, and plenty of like-minded company." From large urban cities to small rural towns, research shows that the nonprofit arts and cultural industry is an economically sound investment. It attracts audiences, it spurs business development, it supports jobs, it generates government revenues, it plays an important role in economic revitalization, and it's the vibrancy of our neighborhoods and is the cornerstone of tourism. Arts develop the skills that are necessary for our young people to become passionate learners and eager to face the challenges of the future. It develops greater imagination, which leads to experimentation and innovation. It teaches intellectual flexibility, a crucial competency for the 21st century workforce, and it teaches the importance of collaboration, the number-one trait considered essential by 75% of chief executive officers. To demonstrate the abundance of the arts and culture, you only have to look at the fresh-off-the-press 2013-2014 Arts and Cultural Information Guide. Our online calendar, which accompanies it, updated daily with new information, lists events by the day and by the week in the month. Together, these calendars are the most comprehensive in Indian River County. We have delivered a box to you. I see several of them back on the table, and I hope that the community will stop and pick up one and enjoy one for themselves. By investing in the arts, we plant seeds for the future and make our communities better places to live, locally as well as nationally. Arts mean business. Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you do for the city.
Thank you.
Where's your partner in crime? I mean, your partner. Is he here tonight?
He's in school in Orlando this week.
Okay. Well, we have a proclamation for him, he and you both. All of you know what a great city this is and how nice it's kept and why it looks. One of the reasons why it looks as nice and clean and tidy as it is because of our code enforcement officers. Any complaint that comes in, by the way, if you have a complaint, you can call in anonymously, and our code enforcement officers will go out and check it out. But this is one of the reasons why our city is so nice today, because of these fine people that do this very thankless work.
Thank you.
And you don't always get a warm reception when you walk into somebody's door, do you? Proclamation, whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of the City of Vero Beach, Florida through the enforcement of building and zoning and housing, annual animal control, fire safety, environmental solid waste, and other codes and ordinances. Whereas code enforcement officers are often not credited for the job that they do in improving lives and neighborhoods, as are emergency personnel such as fire, police, and emergency medical services. Whereas every day, assisted by support program staff, they attempt to provide quality customer service to the public for the betterment of the community. And whereas too many times their efforts go unnoticed, even after code compliance has been accomplished due to their efforts and expertise. Whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly responsible persons who take care of their, take their job seriously and are proud of their department and the local government within which they serve. And whereas October is National Code Compliance Month, now therefore, I Craig Fletcher, Mayor of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2013 as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Month in the City of Vero Beach, and encourage all citizens to join in expressing their appreciation for the dedication and outstanding service provided for the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers. I really do know, I got my, I got my start in politics on the Code Enforcement Board here 10, 14 years ago, I think it was, and I know what you guys go through, and I really, really appreciate your job.
Thank you.
Do you like a few minutes to say?
It's not a popular job, but it's a necessary job.
It is a very necessary job. Thank you very much. Come right down. I have. And that is one of the more thankless jobs anybody in this also. Chief Curry, you want to come down?
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, David Curry, Police Chief. From time to time, we recognize our city employees, as you know, publicly, and tonight we want to recognize one of our citizens publicly. Rick Reynolds, to my left here, helped us with the apprehension of a bank robber in August, and you probably remember the case. I'll just go over it just a little bit. We had a bank robbery at the Sun Trust Bank on August 1st, and that same individual then robbed the PNC Bank on Beechland Boulevard on August 30th. And fortunately, Rick Reynolds was at the drive-up there at PNC, noticed something not right in his words, that kind of thing, and saw basically the incident take place and followed the robber, called us, and we were able to apprehend him a few blocks away. So we just wanted to thank him publicly. I know there are some employees that are happy that they helped out there from PNC as well. They came out to see Rick tonight. It's not very often that you witness a bank robbery while you're at the drive-up. Usually, it's a sucker or a dog bone or something for the kids here. And then again, it's not always the case where somebody takes the kind of action that Rick took and, again, observed and waited and communicated with the bank and then followed and then called law enforcement, and we made the arrest on Gardenia, so just a few blocks away from their PNC at Beechland Boulevard. So we have a certificate of appreciation from the Police Department, and we just wanted to, again, publicly recognize Rick tonight and say thank you very much.
This is weird, but I hope anybody that goes to a bank, watches a robbery, would try to catch the guy. I didn't think it would happen like that, but it did, so. It was his bad day. Vero Beach is good day.
Bad day that you were there, right? Good for you, Rick.
But, yeah, it was different.
Well, good for you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Another day, another just one more day.
Good job.
Chief Howard.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. Did you carry your transaction at the window?
After the robber. You had to go piss down here.
Only Jim would worry about whether or not he transactioned.
There are many things that council members are called on to do, and they're usually
thankless jobs that you never see us do. Travel all over the state for meetings that are sometimes rather boring, but we do them anyway because it has to do with the City of Vero Beach. I wanted to present to Ms. Turner a plaque for her dedicated service and outstanding leadership while as Director of 2012-2013 Florida League of Cities. Laura, thank you for your work. You're one of the more tireless people I've ever seen in this job. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you very much. I was going to say that the Florida League of Cities is a vehicle that gives us a larger voice as we join with the other 435 cities in the state, that when we go up the state legislature to plead our cause, whether it's for protecting our home rule, our ability to make laws for our own communities, our communication tax revenue, our, most recently now, the Indian River Lagoon, that we want the legislature's support. So it just magnifies our voice in joining in with them.
Yep. Thank you again. The public comments section. Going to discuss her upcoming fundraiser?
Fundraisers.
Oh, what you got there?
Fundraisers.
Busy lady.
That's a painting.
Oh, neat.
Isn't that pretty? But that's my second thought. Sue Deneno, 5125 Trade Winds, Vero Beach. This Thursday night, and I know y'all are busy, but we've been busy too. I'm on Jay's fundraising committee, and one of the things that we're doing is this Thursday night at the Marriott. I think you guys have a handout for this. Marriott has an art night every year, and this year they asked the art club if we would conduct it for them, so we are. There's going to be 35 artists, 16 children. The artists' work, they'll have originals and prints for sale. 100% of the application fees that the artists pay to be in the show will go to the Recreation Department and a percentage of the sales as well. So we would ask, I know you guys are busy. Everybody's campaigning and going to Republican things and whatnot, but it's five to nine, so if you can squeeze us in on the front end of the Republican thing or on the back end of the Republican thing, we'd like you to come, okay, and support us because we're trying to support y'all. The other thing is the 3296 Go, you know, the event that's happening on December 6th, which is the party at the end of Royal Palm Point. There's a 2K run-through the fingers in the dark, tree lighting ceremony, big party down there. And the artists, and I'll tell you who I've got lined up so far, Don Mill, Rita Ziegler, Barbara Landry, and I so far have, are donating paintings that'll be raffled off, and the proceeds will go to the Recreation Department. So we'd appreciate if you would attend both events and bring your visas.
We'll try to join you.
Is that one of the paintings you've got there?
Show the painting again.
Oh, that's beautiful. Beautiful. All the paintings will be of the fountain. Oh, great.
Great. Thank you.
I want to come up and say a few things real quick. Rob Slezak, Recreation Director.
Wait a minute. We're going to take a vote.
First of all, big thank you to Sue and everything she's doing, and Jay with his group. We also have Eric Tumsoe here from the Lifeguard Association. I can't say enough how much people are trying to pitch in to help out, and we really appreciate that, and that's really all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Rob, can you, while you're up here, can you just say a little bit about the upcoming Children's Parade?
Yes, the Halloween Parade. Thank you. That is going to be on Saturday, October the 26th, and we're going to get together over at the Community Center. We're going to have a little parade through 14th Avenue and then come down and do the costume judging contest. It's year number 54.
Wow.
54th. And just was talking to, we were just talking with Holt, who, as a two-year-old, he said that he had participated in it.
Wow.
I'm not going to tell you how old he is, but it's.
We can do the math.
But the bottom line, it's 54 years, and I will tell you, we wanted to keep that tradition going, and fortunately, we have great partners like these folks and Mulligan's and Angie and her group, and can't say enough, thanks.
I'm looking forward to judging again. I think this is my fifth year. I've got a long way to go to catch up to Holt.
Yes, yes. So, thank you.
This is the public comment portion of the program. If anyone in the audience would like to comment to the, come forward now. Could I have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. Eric Tumsoe, 1351 White Heron Lane, Vero Beach.
I know we have it already, Eric, but thank you anyways.
I'm the President of the Vero Beach Lifeguard Association. It's a nonprofit organization with a mission to promote lifeguarding and water safety in Vero Beach and surrounding communities, as you know. We took it upon ourselves this past month to do, actually do a beach safety survey, which I believe all you guys have gotten email. Basically, it's our way of being proactive in finding out exactly what we need on the beach to make it as safe as possible for the residents and tourists alike. The VBLA is made up of folks who work at the beach, live at the beach, have businesses at the beach, so they have a very comprehensive knowledge of exactly what's happening there. So forwarded you guys that information, it goes in priority. So obviously, not this fiscal year, and that's already set, but maybe '14 and '15 you can consider. I know we forwarded it to Rob as well, things like restoring Homestead hours, maybe putting a guarded area at the Sexton Plaza, which is two of 10 beaches in Treasure Coast that have made the top 10 lists. So we want to thank Jay Kramer for coming to our last meeting and you guys hearing us out. And if you want a copy of it, www.vbla.org, and we'd love for you guys to possibly consider some of these things next fiscal year.
Eric, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I did bring that document with me. I was planning on asking Mr. Slezak these questions later in the meeting, but I'm glad that you're here. Thank you for taking the time out of your free time to come out here and share this with us. One of the things you put on this list of something the municipality of Vero Beach could do to improve beach safety is medical backpacks. Tell me what that need is, and do you currently not have the medical products that you need out there?
We have the EMT bags, the medical backpacks. Well, they're side packs. They weigh approximately 80 pounds. They have oxygen in them, NPAs, OPAs, all those things we need for medical on the beach, and it's very difficult to run with it, basically. We've had to run quarter-mile with it on our backs, especially Homestead. We had a cervical spine injury at Sexton Plaza one time, and, you know, not that we're not in shape, but it would be nice if we had it on our backs, like they do in the military, the medics have in the military, which actually run much better than, kind of like a large purse.
Like a duffel bag.
Yeah. It's really cumbersome, you know, especially if you have the AED and everything else. So that would be a big benefit. Not our top priority, but we'd love to see some equipment like that.
Are these common throughout other municipalities and throughout the area? I mean, is this, are we missing the boat? Is this the norm?
As far as the backpacks, no. I mean, it would be nice to have, and we train basically with the bags we have now, so it wouldn't be a showstopper, but it definitely, it was one of many suggestions made by VBLA members. We have the supplies we need, and just the vehicle to get them to the victims and make our job as easy as possible, especially in all the chaos.
And then you also list that the top two things that we could do is to build another tower at Homestead and a tower at Sexton Plaza. And you feel those are the important priorities?
Yes, ma'am. And VBLA is even willing to get the materials. We're confident we can get the materials donated to us. We could build it ourselves, and I think we can get enough community support as far as engineering, architectural renderings, and of course, you guys will waive the, you know, the fees for, never mind, the permits, the permit fees. But, yeah, that's definitely something that we're even willing to put man-hours in to make happen. And especially at Sexton Plaza because it is such a busy beach and it is unguarded, and we can't see it from either Homestead or JC, so it's a blind area.
My biggest concern with Sexton Plaza is that it's right in the middle of our hotel corridor, and it's a shame that it's not guarded. And as you mentioned before, there have been a number of citizens who have actually saved lives and helped individuals there because it is unguarded.
Yeah, three last month alone. So we're kind of, we're pressing our luck, so.
The main imperative is that if we, if you guys are able to pay to put the towers up, we need to fund somebody to sit in them.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the problem.
Yes, that's a catch. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Eric.
Anyone else like to speak to the council? Please come forward.
Herb Witall, 19th Park Avenue, Vero Isles. And we're looking forward on December 6th to having the race come through our subdivision. We've talked to people, and I think it'll be very good. But I have a couple of other things. One is, I've talked to some of the city employees on this mowing of the grass, and, you know, there are a lot of people that are upset that we're sending our tax dollars to Orlando. Why we couldn't work with somebody here to meet the RFP, and the problem is, the RFP and government, you buy, you pay for the lowest cost, and you get what you pay for. And that bothers me. I sent you all a letter with some pictures on the fertilizer ordinance. As you can see, I'm for the ordinance and getting it passed. But one thing bothers me about your ordinances, and Mayor Fletcher, you were saying you were on the Code Enforcement Committee. What bothers me is that you pass an ordinance, but then code enforcement enforces it. To me, any ordinance, if it's worth its salt, any variances that a committee comes up and agrees to should come back to the council for approval. It shouldn't be up to that committee to be able to rule, one way or the other. And I think that's wrong. The other thing that we hear a lot about, and there's an election coming up, and people are getting their ways out, you hear that if you're not for selling the utility, you're against it. Actually, I think everybody in this town is for selling the utility. There isn't anybody against it. It's how we do it, how it works. And unfortunately, back years ago, when I was on the Utility Commission, I told some people on this council, "The biggest problem you're going to have is FMPA. You need to go to FMPA now and talk to them." And I don't know that anybody from here has gone to all the committee, all the city councils on FMPA and tried to talk them into the fact that we should get out of our contracts and sell our utility. So don't go around saying that somebody isn't for it. We're all for it. It's just, it's got to be done right. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Anybody else like to speak to the council? Please come forward.
Brian Hetty, I do reside in Vero Beach, in the city limits. I do not have a post office box. Herb says everybody's in favor of selling the utility. I don't speak for everybody, wouldn't try to speak for everybody, but if I had to guess, I would guess that what everybody is in favor of is lower electric rates. That's what everybody probably is in favor of. But certainly, there is a question, who's in favor? Because there is an election. We have a couple of candidates, of which I'm one, and we have different organizations and different people trying to figure out who is in favor. We got, all of the candidates got a pledge, see whether or not they would sign a pledge. This is from a nonprofit organization, and the pledge is to agree, if you're elected, that you'll sell the power plant. Mr. Winger decided not to sign the pledge, but he did send out a public record in which I support the sale of the Vero Beach Electric. In fact, it's in accordance with a contract signed February 19th, 2013. So Mr. Winger answered the question. Ms. Carroll, I was trying to find out whether or not she had any public proclamation as to whether or not, and I asked Tammy if any public official signed this. She said she had no public record, so I would ask Councilmember Carroll whether or not that's a signed document. I didn't expect an answer, but I thought she would refuse to answer. She's refused to answer questions for all the time that she's been on council. I have an idea. We have an electric utility, and as some members of the council say, everybody wants to sell it. I think everybody wants lower rates. So how about November 1st, we start up, this November 1st, we start up FPNL, first of this month. Everybody starts getting lower rates. All usage after that date will be billed at FPNL rates, and our staff can become FPNL employees, and we'll send all the proceeds to FPNL. We'll start November 1st. The city gets no more monthly income. All electric income is turned over directly to FPNL immediately upon receipt into FPNL's account. We have received, we have received federal approval for the, for the contract. Governing authorities say, yeah, it's okay. Go ahead. We've got federal approval. And we know the dollar amount. We know what the final terms are. Mr. Winger, I think, was responsible for putting it together in a one-page sheet. This is the terms. Here's what's going on. And we do know that we have to pay bills out of the proceeds. Some of that's explained here, and we'll pay the bills out of, the city will pay the bills out of the proceeds. It's all public record. So turn the switch, November 1st, FPNL. Tell the power plant, fire up. That's what they wanted to do in their, in their proposal. They want to run the power plant here in town. So tell them, get ready. November 1st, you need to turn on. And I think that we should do that November 1st, and if we could get a motion for that. You know, and I understand all of the terms can't be met by then. There's still some, FPNL is arguing with FMPA and OUC. They're doing some negotiation, but it's out of our hands. Everything's out of our hands at this point, except giving FPNL the keys. So let's give them the keys, November 1st. Everybody gets immediately, not in 2016 or some future date, everybody gets lower rates right now, and all's it would take would be a motion. And alls it would take would be a motion from the council. Say, okay, FPNL, you're in charge. Start November 1st. Start billing and, you know, you're saying, no, if you could give me some reasons why this couldn't happen. We've agreed to the terms. Alls we need to do is give them the key. Put them in charge. I had a house one time that I sold. And the mortgage wasn't going to be for, the closing wasn't going to be for like a month later, but the buyer wanted the house right away. So what I did was, I took some money, good faith money. And we could do that with FPNL. What's the 60% outside the, outside the city limits? So good faith money, we've got the, we've got the cash amount. What's the cash amount? 115 million. So take 60%, good faith money. That ensures FPNL isn't going anyplace, ensures the city's not going anyplace. Put the money in our account. Turn FPNL on, November 1st. Everybody in this community gets the rates. And we'll also find out exactly, if there's a motion made, we'll also find out exactly whether or not council members really want to sell the power plant because they'll vote yes, to give FPNL the keys. And alls we need is a motion to say, stop the nonsense, stop the bleeding, stop milking the customers, and give FPNL the keys. And if we can't do it November 1st, maybe we'll do it November 6th on Election Day. But anyway, why can't we do this? Anybody know a reason why we can't? No one has a reason why we can't give FPL the keys and let them, it's, it's an accounting function. We start billing at their rates. We get whatever power, extra power we need from FPL instead of OUC. They've all agreed to it. We've got all the agreements. We got the federal approval. Why do you want to milk the customers longer? Alls we need is a motion to make this thing really happen. And then we'll also find out whether or not council members are telling the truth as to whether or not they really want to sell. If they want to sell, they'll vote, sure. FPNL, you got the keys. Pick them up. Anybody know why that couldn't happen? Pardon? Anybody? Not even anybody in the room? No one knows why it can't happen. No one's willing to try it. No one's willing to stop the bleeding. Because you can still continue to milk the customer base? We need, we need council members that'll make things happen, that aren't just giving us a line of Malaki, that aren't violating codes and, you know, and that are willing to give the customers, the consumers, a break. Let's give the keys to FPNL. Let's start November 1st, 15 days from now. Plenty of time for the electric company to gear up, to start. They don't need 15 days. They could start up tomorrow morning. If we had a problem, an accident out on the feeder lines that come in, the high voltage lines that come in, they could start up tomorrow morning and feed the city of Vero Beach. Alls we need is a motion. So yeah, turn over the keys. If they can't do it, they'll come back and tell you why. Nobody wants to sell this plant. Everybody, everybody's in favor of selling the plant. We know the terms. We've got the approval from the federal government. OUC and FMPA, somebody's still arguing. But the buyer is FPL. Give FPL the keys. Give the customers FPNL rates. Start it November 1st. And Councilmember Cal, you still won't say whether or not you agreed to that, that, you know, the newspapers are reporting that you signed it. I'd just like to know whether you did or not. I asked Tammy. She said that would be a public record that you have. Do you have such a public record?
Mr. Hetty, this is public comment. It's not public debate.
This is my comment. My comment is, do you have such a public record in your possession? Well, your signature is on the agreement sent out by Glenn Heron and the, and the nonprofit that, because Tammy tells me.
I will state for the record, sir, that I have for the last four years, the last three elections, for a public survey and the last two referendums that we did, have supported the sale of the Vero Beach electrical system throughout all that time period. I have went on record on that. I have voted over and over and over to go forward with the contract. And that is my only point of debate that I will.
Okay, but you won't, you won't answer for the public record whether or not this document bears your signature someplace? Because if it does bear your signature someplace, it's a public record and I'm entitled to see it. There's your city attorney right down there shaking his head, yes. I'm entitled to see it. So I have a right to ask you this. I mean, I know you don't like me asking you questions. You didn't, wouldn't answer, answer the question about $20 million. You okayed the payment, but you wouldn't answer where it's going to. And you won't say whether or not you signed an agreement to sell the power plant and you won't make a motion to give FPL the keys so that we can all start on lower rates? So I, I don't know where you really are. Because you make statements, but you won't follow through with your statements. You won't tell whether there really is a public record. You won't sign or deny or affirm. You won't tell us where money goes to that you voted to approve for payment. It's really pretty incredible. You know, you couldn't make this stuff up.
Wayne, would such a document be subject to public records laws?
Well, you should have gotten a memo from me because I was asked that question by Councilmember Winger. And because it involves city business, anything that's received by any one of you is a public record. And anything that you might create, such, even if it's just by your signature going back out, that would be a public record if it involves city business. Yes?
Okay, so someone could just submit a request to the city clerk and that's the end of it?
Sure.
Well, I did, I did that, Jay. I submitted the request to the city clerk and the answer was that it's not a document that she's the custodian of record for. That if Tracy Carroll has a document in her possession, she's the custodian of that record. And the only way that I could find out whether or not it exists is for me to ask Tracy Carroll, which I did, and she won't answer me. So, you know, making the request for the document apparently doesn't work. Hello? Tracy Carroll, do you have such a document in your possession? Did you sign this document? She sits there and blinks her eyes with this blank stare and she won't answer. You know, is it or is it not? It's a simple yes or no. It wouldn't take three minutes. It's just a yes or a no.
Well, the question is if the document is subject to public records laws. And if it is, then who's responsible for producing it?
Well, the custodian.
Which would be whom?
Whoever has it.
Once a request has been made, what, is it two weeks is the time period?
No, there's no set time. It's a reasonable amount of time for disclosure. So if such a document exists, then as any of you would do, normally it does go through Tammy for the council. Tammy can produce it if it exists.
Tammy can produce it if she has it. But a council member might be in possession.
Right.
And in this case, Councilmember Carroll may or may not be in possession. She won't tell anybody whether she signed it or not. The press is reporting she did.
Well, and as I stated, as the council has always provided those things to the city clerk, and the city clerk then, of course, would become the custodian and they have it available.
Well, you know, if we can't get, if we can't get a motion for lower rates here today, maybe we can get a motion on November 6th on Election Day and put people in office that will, will do something other than sit silent with these blank stares. And won't even answer a question about whether or not a public document exists. It's like it's none of our business. Are you kidding me? You know? We elect you, we hire you, and you sit there and no answer. It's incredible. It's mind-boggling.
Anyone else like to speak to the council? Please come forward. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Amelia Graves, 1836 21st Avenue. I promise this will be quick. First, I'd like to say it's exciting to see how many students are in the audience tonight. I think that's great. They picked an interesting night to show. So I'm, I just wanted to talk about the fertilizer ordinance that's coming in front of you all tonight. I think you can see that obviously there's a great deal of community concern. And I think the bottom line is, as a community, we need to craft an ordinance that's as reasonably strict as possible and also enforceable. Because another piece of paper towards a problem that you can't work, isn't going to continue to help our lagoon. So I hope that we can craft something that enables us as a community to enforce it and that the residents are very happy with. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graves. Anybody else would like to speak to the council? Please come forward now. Seeing no more, I'll close the public hearing section of the meeting. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Senator, I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Public hearings. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, amending the Code of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, Chapter 62, Non-Residential District, Article 3, by creating Section 62.36 to provide for planned development as a conditional use in the C1A and the C1 Commercial Zoning Districts, creating Article 14, Planned Development, providing for minimum eligibility requirements, providing for conditional use requirements and minimum performance and development standards, providing for a waiver from development standards that demonstrate and promote a public benefit, providing for conflict and serviceability. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, Mayor. I want to thank you for your kind words about the code enforcement staff. It's a tough job they have.
It is a tough job.
Probably one of the lowest-paid jobs in the city for what they have to do. So I appreciate that opportunity. This is your second public hearing on this ordinance. Basically, it's establishing a flexible regulations for planned developments in the C1A and C1 districts, excluding the overlay district on the beach, Ocean Side, Ocean Side and Cardinal Drives. Basically, the ordinance provides development waivers that can be provided in return. They have to show that public interest is being served by these. It is done as a conditional use and it will be subject to the planning and zoning board approval. So unless you have some questions, there is one mistake that I found in this ordinance.
Oh?
Oh, no.
On page four, if you look under Section 62.603, number sub-paragraph two, it refers to 62.607. It should be 62.606. I think when we were editing the ordinance, I had gotten rid of that section and forgot to change it. Nobody caught it, but I did catch it today, so.
30 lashes.
Yes. So unless you have any other questions of me, I'd suggest you open it to public hearing.
Council, have any questions of Tim?
No, sir.
I'll open the public hearing at this time for this issue. If anyone would like to speak to the council?
I'd just like to reiterate, Herb Whittall, 19th Park Avenue, reiterate what I said before. And that is, here you're passing an ordinance. You're allowing waivers, but you're allowing the waivers to go through the planning and zoning and they're not coming back to you. And I don't think that's correct. We've had enough problems with other ones. If there's a waiver and it's good enough, then it should come back to you. You can give a quick approval. But I think it should come back to you and not planning and zoning, who's a bunch of people that aren't even elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Anyone else in the audience like to speak to the ordinance? Please come forward. Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing section of the Code. Do I have a motion?
I would like to ask a question, Mr. McGarry. Can you delineate exactly what would require, or what type of modification would be allowed for a waiver from the Planning and Zoning Board as opposed to what would need to come back to the council?
Well, I, I think the Planning and Zoning Board has a history of making final decisions on planned development in the city. They also have the ability to grant waivers in the city. So it's not like they don't have that, that power already.
It's a traditional power they've had forever.
That's true. I mean, certainly it's a policy decision for you all to make whether you want to have that final say. Anytime you do that, it lengthens the process. It makes it more uncertain for the applicant going in. That doesn't mean, if you're concerned about the public interest, you know, you want to have the safeguards. But you always have the safeguard that anything that they do can be appealed to you. If there's something that is egregious that comes out of there, can be appealed to you all. So I think that's the body that is, has the experience to do that. And the intent is to have them fairly independent from you, the board, to allow them to make some of those kind of decisions. But you still, in the long run, would be the final arbiter, or not, obviously the courts would, but I mean, you would be an arbiter on any kind of appeal.
And this is in no way providing them a greater set of control than they have now?
No, this is well within their, within their powers and it's restricted by the comprehensive plan and other limitations on it. We tried to craft it to, we made sure to do that. And it's the kind of thing that's going to allow flexible development come in, as you all very aware. We have one that wants to submit on this for the New Hampton and so.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Any other questions of Mr. McGarry?
Real quick on that same, on that same topic. I mean, you mentioned that if, if a, if a group had gotten turned down in the planning and zoning for a waiver, that they could come to council?
Yep.
Yes.
Is the converse true of that? If they get approved of the planning and zoning, that the public can come and contest that?
Yes, there is a, there's a 10-day period where they may file. And certainly, these will be public hearings, so there'll be a lot of publicity involved. So, and we've had that happen in the past, not since you've been on the board, but we've had a few cases where the neighborhoods are, have come forward, yes.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Vark, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. Thank you, Tim. First reading by title for ordinance and resolutions that require public hearing. Item 5A, an ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 60, Appendix Definitions and the Code of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, by creating a definition for community garden. Amending Chapter 64, Article 1, Development Review, by creating 64.14, Community Gardens, Providing Procedures and Standards for Regulating Community Gardens. Amending pertinent sections of Chapter 61, Residential Zoning Districts, Article 1, 3, 4, and 5, to provide for community gardens as principal use in residentially zoned districts. Providing for conflict and serviceability, providing for an effective date requested by the planning department. You didn't get off yet, Tim?
No, I thought I wasn't up, so I'm back here. As you all recall, you directed the staff after a request from Will Tremmel and his family to, to provide for community gardens, which are not allowed currently in our ordinance. The staff prepared a draft ordinance that will allow community gardens on vacant lots in all the residential zoning districts as a temporary use. They'll be regulated through a special use permitting process. There'll be specific standards applied that will ensure that mitigate any offsite impacts from these type of development. So, as the ordinance revises permitted uses in the residential districts, we're required to have two public hearings. So you're going to have two more hearings to go forward on this. The ordinance was based on a draft provided, as I explained. Will Tremmel gave us a very nice starting point and we did, looked at some similar ordinances throughout the state and the country. And the initial draft was due by the Planning and Zoning Board at a workshop. And there were several suggested changes which we made in that. And it was revised. It went to a public hearing and it was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Board. So unless you have any specific questions of me about this now, I recommend it for advertising hearing.
Council, have any questions? Yes?
I have a question. In speaking with a member of the Tremmel family, I'm under the impression that they were required to put a driveway in?
No, they're not required to put a driveway in. If there's a driveway there, they can use it, but no, we didn't require to put a driveway.
Then how will they park vehicles on site?
Well, they won't be able to.
Our other ordinance states that you can't park. Because our other ordinance states that you can't park on grass, or?
Well, this isn't, this isn't a, they would get approval to park on the site. There's provisions in there. We don't want them driving over the curb. And unless there's a curb cut in there, they won't be able to do that. So unless they have some other access.
So they're not required to put a driveway in, then?
No, they're not required to.
Mr. H, I just wanted to thank you and the planning and zoning group for working on, and Mr. Kement, for working on this ordinance. I mean, being able to have a community garden that their produce serves the homeless, they take it to the homeless family center, I think is just a wonderful, wonderful gift for us. Thank you for your efforts.
Well, you can thank Will Tremmel's family.
True, for bringing it forward.
As I explained at the planning and zoning board meeting, he should have my job. He knew the ordinance better than I did.
Wait a minute.
He's got to go to college first.
Can we move this forward to November 5th for its second hearing?
Also move.
For your first hearing.
First hearing.
I need to have.
This is the first reading.
I need to open it up to the public.
Sorry.
What? You don't have to.
You don't have to on this because you will be having a public hearing.
We do that, but you don't have to. We got two hearings.
You can if you want, but you don't have to at this point.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Please come forward now. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of the program. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Ms. Vock?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes. Item 5B. An ordinance of the City of Real Beach, Florida, relating to the sale, merchandising, use of electronic cigarettes, and liquid nicotine, creating a new Chapter 73 in the Code of the City of Real Beach to be entitled Tobacco Products, Providing for Conflict, Serviceability, and Providing for an Effective Date. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything on this?
Well, I can chime in if you like, Jim. This is something the council had asked to be brought back. We base this on the Clay County ordinance. We did send you some materials. I hope you got that the FDA is looking at regulations right now. And also, the Florida Legislature, there has been a bill filed, which of course won't be heard until next year, that would outlaw the sale to anyone under the age of 18. Doesn't address the use in what areas, nor does it address merchandising, but it addresses the sale to persons under the age of 18. So sooner or later, we may end up getting preempted on this anyway.
That's what I think is going to happen.
But I just wanted you to have the most up-to-date information I had.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This comment. Well, first of all, there's two issues here, and I think they could certainly be divided. One is making it illegal to sell people under 18 these devices, and putting the devices in a position behind the counter. And the second one has to do with use of these devices by adults or people over 18. I kind of think they should be divided, that we should deal only with the children and let the wheels of the law grind on the second issue. And I would say that, giving credit to Mrs. Turner on the fertilizer, we're going to deal with that tonight, and she was at the forefront in Bureau Beach, initiated and had a fertilizer ordinance long before others did. And, you know, another year going by until the wheels of law in Tallahassee and Washington grind, I think it's time to do something about the child's portion of this. The other I could live without, quite frankly. So that's my comment.
Any other comments from the council?
Mr. Kement, in reading through this, are we placing any regulation on adult usage of these products?
Yes, it restricts their use to, or basically, it forbids the use in any place where smoking is prohibited.
And in our city, smoking is prohibited at the playgrounds?
Well, no, not really. It's just we have those containers for cigarette butts that's really not out. Because remember, the state law preempts you. You cannot regulate smoking.
Right.
So we can't outlaw smoking, other than what the Clean Air Act says, and you can't smoke in public buildings, basically. And then there's regulations for restaurants, things like that. But local governments cannot regulate smoking. But what this does is say, whatever the Clean Air Act, where it says you can't smoke, you can't use the e-cigarettes either. That's what it says.
Okay. And we are also stating that these products could not be put in dispensing machines, so a child or an 18, 17-year-old could go stick a few dollars in it and get one. We're saying that that's not allowed either.
Right. Has to be under the control, basically, of the merchant, where they have to obtain it and sell it to the person wanting to buy it.
Behind the counter.
Basically, yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, just one quick question, or comment. I'd like to just say, I'd like to split this issue out, too. I mean, it's pretty obvious, we've got to do something to make sure children don't get a hold of these things until we can get clear direction from the state as to how they're going to define this issue. But as far as use of e-cigarettes where smoking is prohibited, you know, I rarely have ever noticed any smoke or any problems from people with the e-cigarettes. In fact, I don't think I can ever remember when I've seen people using them where it's been a problem. But, you know, responsible adults, until we get definition from the state, I think it's, we just leave that second part out. I'd just like to see the children protected from this.
Any other comments by council? Do I have a motion on this?
Well, I'd make a motion to do what Mr. Kramer said, and move forward with the portions having to do with children, but strip out the portions having to do with adult, and that is my motion.
I'll second.
Well, I believe that would need to come back to us, then, with the modification.
It'll be back anyways.
For clarification, strip out the prohibition on use, but leave in the merchandising.
The sale.
The sale of merchandise.
Under 18.
Under 18, yes. I have a motion, and a second. Is there any more discussion? Ms. Vock?
And this is to set the public hearing on November 5th.
November 5th.
Okay. Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes. Thank you. Ordinance passes unanimously. Item C. An ordinance of the City of Real Beach, Florida, providing and establishing revisions to the budget for the City of Real Beach, Florida, for the period beginning October 1, 2012.
Excuse me, I'm very sorry to interrupt, but...
Come up to the microphone, please, sir. Give your name and address, please, sir.
Hello, council members. My name is Julian.
Your address, please?
My first, excuse me?
Your address.
Your name and address for the record.
My name is Julian. I live in Lakewood Park. I was, at one time, a city resident. My two children have both gone to public and private school in the city. I work in the city. My wife also works in the city. Concerned about the ordinance just as much as you are, new rules and legislation. When I came in, this is my first time ever really trying to talk about a topic, and when I came in, I met the lady over there, and she said there was two opportunities to speak. One was at the public, and one was when you presented up, and I didn't get that chance to do that.
Go right ahead.
All right. So I just want to go over some of these issues, just to make sure you're clear on both sides of the argument. I had literature handed out. I was a former smoker for 35 years, tried all the drugs, all the expensive, FDA-approved stuff, with all their side effects to quit. I picked up an e-cigarette, and two days I was able to throw away my cigarettes. Now, this is not really advertised as a non-smoking, you know, smoking cessation aid, but that's what it is. According to your papers on this whole, your ordinance here, there's a lot of holes in your very opening statements. For example, mimicking, we're talking about, we can play in some of the kids' arguments with this, too, for both sides of the argument, says whereas unregulated devices purposely mimic the art of smoking. This is one of the things that helps smokers quit cigarettes. It's because you pick up this device, you're doing the hand-to-mouth routine, and you're taking a puff, and it's a water vapor that has nicotine in it, and you don't even have to inhale this product into your lungs to get the effect. You breathe it out your nose. It's mimicking it for a purpose. It's not mimicking it for the sake of kids. Play what you want into that. What I'm, I don't know if you can understand what I'm saying. You're mimicking it because this is part of the addiction. Now, as far as, I really, I went through a lot of this stuff here. Your literature should explain what really is in the e-liquid. All FDA-approved, US pharmaceutical-grade ingredients, approved for consumption. Even nicotine is pharmaceutical. It's available to the public only in doses that are not toxic, and which are in line with smoking and cigarette, as far as your intake and content. I just want to get out some highlights. Nobody's ever overdosed on nicotine, straight nicotine, ever, ever, ever. And there's concerns that it's toxic. It is, but we're not able to buy it over the counter in that form. So if you have a bottle of e-juice around and a kid gets it, it's not going to be toxic to them. It might make them sick, might give them a little high blood pressure, but it's not going to be toxic. The age-of-18 rule law, no problems with that. It's nicotine. There's definitely no harm. I have two, like I said, I have two kids. Neither of them smoke, by the way. Now, as far as accessibility, vending machines, I think a vending machine should be allowed in a bar, e-cigarette vending machine. That might be the only place, because it's in an establishment where you can't get 18. What I'm trying to get at is, I think this product is almost a miracle for a smoker. You know, our population, I think there's 20% of Americans still smoke, and I think probably 80% of those smokers have tried to quit, and they can't do it. And this product being new, it's creating a tidal wave of people finding out about it and actually trying it, and it's working. It's an alternative nicotine system, and it's working. I think it should be, I think Bureau Beach should purposely try to get people off of cigarettes by introducing them to this. Now, you're going to hear all these, we don't know what's in it, we don't know about the studies and report, but we all know nicotine's been around for hundreds of years, and all the ingredients that are in it have been around for as long. So I'm just trying to open up your mind to, you need to look at more studies. And the FDA hasn't done any studies that are credible on this, at all. The FDA, who is, I'm sorry to say something like this, but they're in the pockets of the big pharmaceutical companies that are producing Shantex in the gums and the lodgeses. They want to kill this so bad because we're cutting into their profits and their stockholders' profits. So they don't want e-cigarettes expand.
If I may, keep in mind, we're not banning e-cigarettes.
No, I know you're not.
We're just making sure that they're not accessible to children under 18.
Right. Well, if that's the only purpose, then you only, you have two clauses in here. I think the first one in here had the chapter on your age limit, which is fine. We want to keep them away from kids, you know? If they're going to do this stuff, they're going to do it like when we were young, you steal a cigarette from your parent or something like that, real cheap and easy. This stuff is very expensive to get started in. You got all these fruit flavorings, marketing gimmicks. They're not gimmicks. They're for smokers to be able to try to enjoy this product, to keep them off of cigarettes. I've been doing this, I got introduced to a generic storeboard item. It was half stale, half battery was half-dead. It lasted me a few days, but it was enough to convince me this stuff could really work. I'm doing all the nice, excuse me if I sound weird or something, but I like all the nice fruity, minty flavors that are out there. There's thousands of them available for adults to buy. Keeps me off of cigarettes, and I don't ever want to go back to it. I smell cigarettes now. I don't want to be in the no-smoking zone with my e-cigarette, or vaporizer, as we call it. I don't want to be standing next to them, because, you know, when you do, you're non-smokers. You don't want to be near smokers, mainly because of the smell. And you know that they're doing something wrong in their lungs, which this stuff certainly doesn't. The marketing stuff for the kids, I think it's too big of a hype. The kids, it's just too much money for them to go out and buy this product. They're not going to share it, because it's not like a cigarette that costs 25 cents a piece, you give it out to your friends. The peer pressure is not going to be as great with it. You buy this stuff online, you need a credit card. There's info, you know, it's not going to be easy, kids get a hold of this, and then they got to get addicted to it. And then, it's not a stepping stone to smoking, because after you do this, if that underage child liked a strawberry flavor, which was expensive to get going in this in the beginning, he's not going to go want to buy a cigarette and get hooked on that, because it's going to taste like garbage. Just trying to make you see that point, too. You know, this product is not geared for kids. Now, if somebody's trying to specifically market for it, I would definitely be all in favor of, you know, it's not on TV, you know?
For the record, 4.8% of the children, according to a recent article, under 18 have tried this product in the United States, for what it's worth. So, I mean, we do have concern, and it is growing. And all we're trying to do here is cut off that possibility. We're not dealing with a person such as yourself. So I think we've addressed your concern.
Okay. So what I think I'm hearing from you is you'd rather them have, try cigarettes instead of vaping?
What we did is we took the e-cigarettes and put them behind the counter, so that they would have to ask, so we could make sure that there's verification.
No problem with any of that.
And then we also stripped out the provisions.
No problem with any of that, but we're still looking at merchant, you know, you have something in, and you said it too, something about merchandising, you know, which is making the product look like it is something that kids might like. This is not what it's marketed for, unless big tobacco gets into the game, which they are, and they're going to try to run commercials and ads in newspapers and try to sell a giant amount of it. Right now, the whole industry is small business, and most of these people who are doing this are very health-conscious. They just have one addiction, the nicotine. You know, so I just had to say something, because I just need you to open up, you know, in case all you're reading is government-handed-out materials, and it's coming your way from so-called health and media organizations, it's not all correct.
Thank you, sir.
Just FYI, sir, we probably received, what, 50 or 60 different communications? And the majority of the communications we received were from individuals in the public who were now addicted to the vaping products. So we did receive both sides. I just want to make sure that you realize.
Right, well, yeah, nicotine is very addictive. It's the same, the effects are about the same as caffeine, except a little stronger, with the same side effects, or what it does. It's...
Thank you for coming in.
That's why it's not a drug right now. That's why it was only named a tobacco product only a few years back, because it's really neither.
Thank you for getting up and joining us.
Thank you for listening.
You bet. Item 5C. An ordinance of the City of Real Beach, Florida, providing and establishing a revision to the budget of the City of Real Beach, Florida, for a period beginning October 1, 2012, and ending September 30, 2013, by decreasing the general fund by $30,518, by increasing the street paving and drainage fund by $243,195, by decreasing the infrastructure and real estate improvement fund by $10,000, by decreasing the electric fund by $1,693,953. Deep breath. By decreasing the electric R&amp;R fund by $2,360.363, by decreasing the water and sewer fund by $459,566, by increasing the water and sewer R&amp;R fund by $4,185,200, by decreasing the airport fund by $22,589, by increasing the airport construction fund by $76,203, by increasing the marina fund by $107,374, by increasing the solid waste fund by $20,749, by increasing the recreation fund by $36,379, by increasing the recreation construction construction fund by $17,131, by increasing the risk management fund by $40,318, by increasing the confiscated property fund by $17,600, by increasing the law enforcement education fund by $5,000, by decreasing the Creston Cemetery Trust Fund by $1,633, all from revenues, expenditures, and transfers estimated by the finance director. Hi, Cindy. Can't you write those a little bit shorter?
I apologize. This is that annual ordinance where the title is actually bigger than the entire ordinance, so. And I do want to say, too, if I could just, I make a slight correction to the title, that very last part should be increasing the Creston Cemetery Trust Fund by $1,633. So we'll make that correction for the final reading. What you have in front of you is the first and final amendment to our budget for fiscal 1213, which is the fiscal year that just ended here on September 30. And we do this every year in conjunction with the preparation of our audited annual financial reports, our CAFER, which will be completed in March. The draft of this budget amendment was reviewed and approved by the Finance Commission in late August, and we have made some small changes since then in the general fund in particular, primarily because we know more about our payroll and our pension costs as we draw closer to the end of the year. I'm just going to hit what I think are a couple of highlights, and then I'll happy to answer any detailed questions you might have. You know, the bottom line here for me is, in the general fund, we're projecting that our expenditures will come in slightly, about 30,000 less than our original adopted budget from last year. This is conservative because we haven't seen all the accruals, and it could be better than that, but, you know, as a minimum, we're saying it's going to come in about 30 grand under what we budgeted July of the previous year. And I would say that is a definite improvement over what we've seen in the last couple of years, particularly two years ago when I first arrived. We have really worked on increased internal budgetary compliance, line item transfers, a lot of scrutiny by the department heads. We've also had quarterly variance analysis and reviews of where we stood each quarter in conjunction with the Finance Commission, which has been really helpful. And I think over the last couple of years, we've also begun to budget in a more realistic and conservative way when it comes to revenues and expenditures. So all of those things combined, I think, have led us to a place where I'm really pleased with what I'm seeing as the bottom-line outcome in the general fund and in almost all the funds. The electric fund was updated to reflect the most recent rate sufficiency analysis that we did. The water and sewer utility is still projected to have a $1.2 million cash carryover despite the fact that we had a very much wetter year than we thought and sales were down. And what you see there in terms of capital funds, we are planning, for the first time in a while, to do a first-quarter budget amendment in 1314 for the capital projects. You know, we've worked hard over the years to capture what happens with those multi-year projects. So once we have all the final results of 1213 and the accruals in, we'll move forward those portions of the multi-year projects that didn't really get spent in 1213 into 1314 so they can continue on. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the details.
Any questions from the council?
I have one routine question, to say the least. The bad debt expense for last year, I mean, where are we generally speaking on bad debt for the utilities?
The bad debt for the utilities, we've just about gotten through that last year where we go seven years back and we had those hurricane years. But one of the things that made last year's bad debt expense booking a little different was I discovered two years ago during the CAFER that up to this point in time, all of the allowance for uncollectible had been booked against the electric utility despite the fact that a good portion of it belonged to both water and sewer and solid waste. So rather than hit those two funds with a giant number in one year and take it all away from the electric fund, I did it across three fiscal years. So that's been amortized out, and it made everything look weird for a couple of years in terms of what was finally booked, but now we've made it right so that each utility is truly reflecting its allowance for uncollectibles.
So you're telling me it doesn't look weird this year like last year?
It won't look weird, it shouldn't look weird like it did last year because it, basically what happened was, it went down in the electric utility and went up in those other two utilities, and it did that across two years. And I just didn't write it all off in one year.
Top of mind, do you have any idea what the loss was in there?
I just started working on that journal entry, and it didn't look.
Will you let us know when you know?
I will.
It's certainly a routine.
I absolutely will.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to the budget issue? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, before a motion, just a comment on my part. We really owe a debt of gratitude to the department directors for what they have done to pull this through. As you recall, and I think a lot of you were new at the time, we had some real major issues in doing a budget amendment, which made us look like the whole world was falling apart, and we were going to have to close down City Hall. But I think the department directors have really taken hold and taken the initiative of running those departments like little side businesses and that, putting all that together. And so this budget amendment, when you come in within $30,000 and a $20 million general fund, that's pretty good.
Yeah. You have done a good job, Cindy. Thank you. Do I have them?
I'll make a motion to move it forward to second hearing. Do you believe that's the right motion?
Correct. For the fifth.
Second.
Ms. Park?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes. Item 5D, An Ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida pertaining to environmental regulations, amending the code of the City of Vero Beach, Chapter 38, Environmental, Article 5, Florida-friendly fertilizer use, providing for conflict and serviceability, providing for an effective date. This was requested by us. I have, go ahead.
Okay, I was just going to let you know, basically what we did was, as directed, we brought back what basically is the changes that make it into what the county has for an ordinance. One difference being, when it comes to unenforcement, and you should, in fact, you should have a corrected version in front of you. We had missed a couple little, had a couple typos in there, and also Ms. Arcott was kind enough, I'm glad she pointed out that we had not stricken weed and feed fertilizer as exempted out. So that's stricken through now from our old ordinance. But unenforcement, we tried to make that compatible with what the city has as far as code enforcement personnel. They actually had two people specific to them that were named as enforcement officers, one in Public Works, one in, I think, the environmental section, and we don't have those positions, so we deleted that, and we just, and also, they made theirs, basically, I think, as a criminal charge. But again, we typically on ordinance don't take them to court for any number of reasons, for between having to pay filing fees and what have you.
Gets complex.
It's much more complex, and so we just would be saying that we would rely on our code enforcement process as far as the enforcement side.
Okay, I know there's some people in the audience who'd like to speak to this issue. Anybody who'd like to speak to the fertilizer issue, please come forward. Well, I guess I'm wrong. Nobody wants to say anything. Okay. Whoops, we have a taker. Your name and address.
Good evening. I'm John Bukas. I'm a resident of Vero Beach at 6530 36th Place in the gated community of Oak Chase. Thank you for opening this up and revisiting this. We've made a lot of progress in terms of awareness, as you know, all the way up to the federal government. I'd just like to add a couple of comments, if I may read them into the record.
Certainly.
The research at the University of Florida's turf facility in Citra to quantify the amount of nitrogen leaching from a healthy lawn fertilized with the recommended annual three to four pounds of nitrogen is thorough and well-documented. We do not take issue with the research relating to leaching, but question its relevance to runoff since the research is performed on level ground. If we are concerned about the lagoon, then we must accept that turf does not require the prescribed three to four pounds of nitrogen to remain green and healthy. My experience in Vero Beach with Floritan, which is the Augustine turf, over a 10-year period, is one application of one pound of slow-release nitrogen per 1,000 square foot in the spring is adequate to maintain a green and healthy lawn. There is sufficient nitrogen in the lawn blades cut during the mowing, if returned to the lawn, together with the atmospheric nitrogen fixation from thunderstorm lightning. One of the main distributed sources of nitrogen pollution of the lagoon stems from the nitrogen-laden lawn clippings, fertilizer runoff, and stray fertilizer being washed into the retention ponds and interlateral canals during heavy rain. Overfertilization exacerbates the problem. I run two weather stations, one here in Oak Chase and one in Vero Beach, and one at the Gifford Youth Activity Center. Both of these are on the internet, and I can assure council members that it is not uncommon for it to rain at a rate of five or more inches of rain per hour, providing a complete flush of the surface into drains and into the lagoon. During the storm period on September 2 this year, the peak rainfall rate was 8.5 inches per hour. The months before the heavy rain season provide an adequate opportunity to fertilize our lawns, and I'd like to repeat that, the months before the heavy rain season provide an adequate opportunity to fertilize our lawns, and the application of nitrogen should be limited to this pre-storm period. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for joining us. Anybody else like to speak to this issue? Please come forward.
I'd just like to add that I gave you those photographs, and as one of them came, that one was, had nothing on it for three years, no water, no fertilizer, and it looks perfectly green. And we live in the area of Vero Isles, which Dr. Witter says is the worst as far as nitrogen in the water, so.
Thank you, Herb. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Todd Josko. I'm at 46, 44 West Gandy Boulevard in Tampa, and I represent the Florida Turf Grass Association, which is a statewide trade association of professionals who work in the turf industry. We have lawn care companies, we have sod growers, golf course superintendents, professionals who are trained in best practices for the protection of water quality when taking care of turf. We support the ordinance that y'all have in place, and I think that a lot of our folks here in Vero were here when you adopted that ordinance a year ago, and it's working, and we ask that you continue to allow it to work. You know, this is a very passionate issue, and I think it's important to note that we're all on the same side. I mean, we want what's best for the Indian River Lagoon and for water quality resources. And no one disagrees with anything in your ordinance. I think that there are some folks that think that there should be additional restrictions put on there. And, you know, some of them sound good, but the problem is that they're not shown to improve water quality. And it wasn't that no one thought of them a year ago when the ordinance was adopted here. It's not that no one thought of them when the state put together a recommended ordinance, it's that they were vetted at that time and that they were rejected from inclusion in the state model ordinance because the science shows that they didn't do anything to protect water quality. In fact, evidence shows that they actually hurt water quality because some restrictions, while sounding good, damage turf because they don't allow the turf to get the nutrients it needs to be an effective buffer against all types of urban runoff. And the most important time to feed turf, to make sure it gets the nutrients it needs, nitrogen being most important, is during the peak summertime growing period. That's when the turf is most efficient in taking up nutrients. That's when leaching is scientifically insignificant, and that's when runoff is scientifically insignificant. So the concept, I'll take the most controversial of the restrictions that you're considering, the blackout period. Your ordinance already prohibits fertilization when there's an expectation of two inches of more rainfall within a 24-hour period. Now, I just heard the gentleman before me talk about eight inches an hour. I can tell you that this year, there was more rain in Florida than in 70 years, I believe. I think it was 1946 there was more rainfall on record. Less than 10% of the rainfall events in the state of Florida were in excess of one inch per 24 hours, not even one hour, talking about 24 hours. Your ordinance prohibits application of fertilizers with nitrogen or phosphorus within two inches of rainfall within 24 hours. So now we're looking at, let's do more. Let's say that we can't trust people to not fertilize when it's going to rain a handful of times per year, so let's ban all types of fertilization that have nitrogen or phosphorus from June 1 to September 30, the time that grass, studies after studies after studies, have shown needs it the most and takes up those nutrients most efficiently. Well, first of all, you're going against the recommendations of DEP, Department of Agriculture, University of Florida, IFIS in doing that. But it's not just a five-month, or, I'm sorry, a four-month blackout period. For the folks that I represent, the commercial industry, it's impossible for us to go to a lawn on May 31 and provide fertilizer, and then go back on September 1, or whenever the blackout, the four-month blackout period. For the commercial folks, when these blackout periods are more of a five-to-six-month blackout period, and it just compounds the damage. It makes it so that we can never recover that turf to get it healthy so that it can keep doing its job of being a buffer throughout the winter in the dormant months of the fall and the spring. So I understand, it sounds good that it rains all the time and that we need to protect the lagoon because people just don't care or won't take the time necessary to educate themselves about fertilization before major rainstorms, but it's just not true. And what it does is, it hurts water quality. So we're here to ask you, you adopted an ordinance last year, let it continue to work. I'll leave some stuff here, your county brochure about seagrasses, where there was almost a straight line of seagrass growth from 1943 up until 2009, and then we saw, for whatever reason, a 60% reduction of seagrass between 2009 and 2012. Well, that doesn't gel with y'all just putting a fertilizer ordinance into effect in 2012. Everything was great until 2012. You did the right thing by being proactive, and we saw all of these horrible situations in the Indian River Lagoon. And the point to that is, it's a comprehensive problem. Non-point source pollution is a comprehensive issue, and it takes comprehensive solutions. You're doing the right thing by having a fertilizer ordinance, but please don't think that you can solve other problems by coming up with more controversial restrictions having to do with fertilizer. Let's look at all of the different attributes, let's look at all of the different sources, and let's come up with solutions for all of the different sources of non-point solution. You were very proactive by passing in ordinance in 2012. We applaud you for that, and we ask you to please keep it in place and let it work. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, may I ask a question?
Yes.
You were from Tampa Bay?
From the city of Tampa.
You're from the city of Tampa. And hasn't Tampa been recognized as a success story based on their own Tampa Bay Estuary Program Management Board for residential fertilizer and the success that they have had with the seagrass replenishment?
The A is seeing the largest gains in seagrass growth that they've seen in years and years, but you brought in an interesting point to kind of say, well, what's causing that? Hillsborough County is the biggest county within the Tampa Bay area. They have the model ordinance, they don't have a blackout period, they don't have any of the restrictions.
I'm looking at it in the states that they banned non-agricultural nitrogen fertilizer application from June 1 to September 30.
Not in Hillsborough County. I live in Hillsborough County.
Well, this document is from the Tampa Bay Estuary Program.
I haven't seen it, but I'd be happy to look at it.
All right. Okay.
So, you know, I think that there's a lot of things that have been done in the Tampa Bay area. I know that they have, you know, for instance, reclaimed water. There was a time where all of the agricultural reclaimed water was dumped back into Tampa Bay. They don't do that anymore. They recycle that, they use for agricultural. I think that there are comprehensive solutions to look at. I think that, you know, the danger of saying, well, seagrass growth is doing so well in Tampa Bay, it's got to be because of a fertilizer ordinance. You just can't make those conclusions. Like I said, Hillsborough doesn't have a blackout period. Pinellas has a blackout period and a sales ban, which isn't anything that's an option anymore to local governments. That was, and then Mandatee County just two years ago implemented a ban. So there's to.
Because there's a number of counties that are around the bay.
That are all adjacent to Tampa Bay. So everybody's different. But I think that the seagrass growth and what you look at, I mean, those numbers were increasing long before these ordinances went into effect. You know, Pinellas is the longest one that's been there, and it's been in effect for three bans now. That's just not enough to show seagrass growth. You know, conversely, if you're going to say that it's working there, then how do you explain how things are working here? It's kind of one or the other. Certainly, the drop-off in seagrass growth wasn't due to the City of Vero Beach implementing a fertilizer ordinance. It would just be the opposite. So, you know, I think we have to be careful when we look at trends and try to, you know, pick in specific things that are attributed to those trends.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again. Appreciate your time.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Come forward, sir. Good evening. And your name and address, please, sir.
Hi. John Devis, 2400 Third Place, Vero Beach, 32962. John Davis, 2400 Third Place, Farrow Beach, 32962. I can understand the gentleman, it's his business to be selling fertilizer and all to want to do the fertilizer. I'm here basically in support of a strong fertilizer ordinance, and basically the six months period we're talking about. There was a lot of talk about the rainy season and so forth. It's not only the rain, the other part is our irrigation. We have irrigation systems that add to it. We have rain sensors on our irrigation systems. However, rain sensors are not a fortune teller. It might be nice today, your irrigation comes on tonight, soaks the ground with two inches of rain, tomorrow morning you get it downpour, and it makes it twice as bad. So, the water, the runoff, the runoff is going to be there during the rainy season, and the irrigation system's going to be also helping it. So, I'm basically here to support you all, to have the courage and all to stand up to a strong fertilizer ordinance. We need it for our lagoon. Our county has come up strong. Martin County, some of the other counties, they're starting to realize the problem, and hopefully, we'll start turning that river around. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak to the issue? Good evening. And your name and address?
My name's Jean Ketchpole. I live at 5...
Can you pull your mic down?
Pull that mic down.
I'm one of those little people.
Okay.
I live at 526 Fiddlewood Road in Vero Beach, 32963. I agree with the gentleman from the turf industry on one thing, that we do need a comprehensive solution. And to me, comprehensive means all of the communities along the Indian River Lagoon need to have similar or exact fertilizer ordinance. We need to coordinate all of our efforts to at least have some effect on reducing the nutrient pollution. So I urge you to continue and move forward with this stronger ordinance, and I commend you for readdressing the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak to the issue?
Mayor, if I may ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Is it all right if I have Mr. Bolton come up? I would like to ask him a couple questions.
Sure.
You shouldn't have been lurking in the back there, Rob. You get in trouble, standing around opportunities.
The attorney says you should have been out in the lobby.
There you go.
I have a couple questions. I'm looking at a document that was provided for us, Indian River Lagoon Basin, Central Indian River Lagoon Basin Management Action Plan, that's a mouthful, in cooperation with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. And it states that the point source facilities throughout the central Indian River Lagoon, the wastewater management plants, that when this study was developed, which may have been within the last year or two, that the Vero Beach wastewater treatment facility was the largest entity that was putting nitrogen into the lagoon at 12,000 pounds per year. And then the Vero Beach RO plant was putting about 3,000 pounds of total nitrogen per year. Are these, is this data old, based on our, if you can tell the public just a little bit of that? Because if a member of the public was looking at that, they would say, "City of Vero Beach, why are you worried about this when you guys are the biggest point source person or entity that's putting nitrogen in?"
That data was collected probably in the late 90s through 2003, 2004, and was first published, I think, in 2004 as the EPA's negotiation with a environmental firm that sued the EPA, that there wasn't any action being taken on the Indian River Lagoon. Then it was delayed until just kind of the last three or four years, and they published that information as the point source. They collected data outside the wastewater plant discharges and the water plant discharges all along the lagoon and calculated numbers. But during the 2000 era there, prior to 2010, the city was proactive and decided at that time to put an injection well in. And by putting an injection well in, we ceased all discharges to the lagoon. So that is what we were putting into the lagoon at one time on an average. However, we have not discharged anything into the lagoon since 2010. Late 2010, when the injection well went online, all those discharges stopped.
Can you explain a little bit to the public of what happens to the wastewater, the wastewater that goes through the treatment plant? Then where does it go? And how is it not affecting our lagoon anymore?
The wastewater that comes into the plant, when everyone flushes their commodes or takes showers or turns on their food grinders in their sinks, that destroys, chops up the food, comes into the wastewater plant where it is treated, screened, treated, and the solids are hauled off to a landfill. And the water that is left over through the process is then filtered, chlorinated, and pumped back out to sites on the Barrier Island and along Indian River Boulevard on reuse sites. Some of our parks, most of the parks along that area are receiving it as reclaimed water. Residents up in Johns Island, all the way south to the Moorings, are receiving it on either golf courses or residential homes.
And then some of the additional water then is pumped into the injection well, and it's disposed of that way?
The excess water that we cannot sell during heavy rain events, when there isn't a demand, when everybody's irrigation systems are shut off either automatically or people just go and shut them off, we then have to pump that water down the injection well, which is roughly 3,000 feet deep.
Below the aquifer.
Below the aquifers.
So, in other words, what I wanted to make a point to the public is that the city has recognized that we were one of the main...
Offenders.
Let's put it that way. That's a little nicer than what I was going to say. That we were responsible, and that we, a number of years ago, took a definitive action in terms of absolutely stopping anything from our wastewater treatment plant of getting into the lagoon. And I think that was one of the first steps. We mentioned a little while ago, the fact that this had to be a multifactorial approach to treat what we've got in the lagoon right now, which is the death of the seagrass, which is the ecological disaster that we're all, thank goodness, everybody else along the lagoon is recognizing that right now. But the city of Vero Beach has started down this path a number of years ago, when you guys recognized this, and we were very concerned with the numbers that were coming out of the EPA. And I think that promoting the proper usage of fertilizers going forward would be a next step that the city needs to take in terms of an approach that we can get along with the rest of our neighbors throughout the county, as well as on a regional basis, and a number of the other municipalities and counties throughout the Treasure Coast. Council of local governments, which I serve on as a representation of the city of Vero Beach, are also adopting these type of multifactorial approaches to treating this disaster.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else like to speak to the issue? Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Good evening. Susan Boyd, 8124th Street. I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I just want to make one minor point. I do hope that, and encourage you, to pass a stronger fertilizer ordinance. And I'd just like to make one point in terms of a stronger ordinance, which would include a blackout period in terms of enforcement, that for we citizens, it's a lot easier for us to obey the law if it's easy to obey, and just knowing these are the states that you don't fertilize your lawn will make it a lot easier for citizens to comply. So, and I would encourage you, just under that idea alone, never mind the whole idea that we all think it would be better for the lagoon to have this ordinance. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I...
Yes.
Now, having started with a very generic fertilizer ordinance, I'm delighted to come back at this time with a stronger version. I think it's very important that we are consistent with the county, that we have a regional approach to handling our Indian River Lagoon pollution. And also that consistency and uniform regulations improves compliance. As I said, Ms. Boyd brought up a great point, that everybody, you know what that time is, all working out the same thing, and from an education point and point of sale of fertilizer. Our Indian River Lagoon Basin now, we're calling for a 51% reduction in nitrogen and 47% in phosphorus. This is from our BMAT plan. Those are incredibly aggressive goals. And although we may lose a little bit of green grass, I would rather err, let's go for clean water. And I would ask council to move this forward for another reading in its form.
Did you close the public hearing?
No, I haven't. Come right on down.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. And your name and address, please.
My name is Brian Combs. I live at 2303 Atlantic Beach Boulevard. I have something I wish to give to each council member.
Great, come on down.
Just a couple letters and then some information in there that I'd like you to just...
Thank you.
Look at, and if you have time, you can do it all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sir, do you have another copy? The clerk will need one for the record.
Yeah, I think I do. I think I made one, because I knew you'd asked me for one over there, too.
The mayor gave his up, so give that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I have a copy for myself here. First of all, just to give you a little background information, I have lived here in this area since 1981. One of my first jobs here was Indian River County Extension Agent. I dealt with all the horticulture issues, as well the commercial citrus. Really, we're one aging town, so I dealt with everything. One of the things I did help start was a master gardener program in this county at the time. Trained the first master gardeners, and I'm glad to see it's still going on. One of the things you'll see, and this is a long, lengthy letter, and just take time to read it, please. But let's get a couple things. There's been a lot of lagoon in the news. And we need to separate out what's going on down at St. Lucie Estuary with the releases from Lake Okeechobee to the fertilizer ordinance. Those are point source solution. We know the problem down there. So releases from Lake Okeechobee. But that has created such a media circus down there that it's being used as to try to get you to do more restrictive fertilizer ordinances. So, here's the situation in our area. We have, from Brevard County down to this area, just north of Fort Pierce, we had a tremendous loss of seagrasses, and we all know that. Couple weeks ago here, you had a guy from the St. John's Water Management District, he talked about the seagrasses, and in this publication, which we've all seen, right, a couple of things in here. And one is, it says, "Throughout recorded history, the lagoon has flourished and declined. There have been fish kills, algae blooms, and changes in water quality." So, it's happened before. It didn't happen just because there were fertilizer. Way back when, before we had such a large population, there was not fertilizer. So, when he was here, he was talking about, well, we really can't pinpoint the source. And that's true. They can't pinpoint the source. But what they know what happened is that in 2010, 2011, you had these super blooms. So, one of the things, there is now an Indian River Consortium. It's a group of scientists that have gotten together, and I got this, and it's in the back, but one of the things they got together was, they looked at what happened here. And so, I'll read this. "While the immensity of both the bloom and seagrass die-off was surprising, it was more surprising that the event happened at all, given the long-term drought conditions due in 2009, 2011 period, along with a decreasing trend in treated wastewater discharges." Of course, a drought means comparatively little rainfall or runoff. So, what they're saying is when the super blooms occurred, it was during drought periods when there was less rainfall and runoff than there had been previously, and it surprised them because of this. The Indian River Lagoon Basin overall, a very large percentage of its annual external nutrient loading is conveyed by watershed rainfall runoff and stream drainage. The other major sources, atmospheric groundwater, are similarly affected by rainfall and would be eliminated during the period. Therefore, notwithstanding some unreported nutrient-laden discharge, an influx of, an internal flux of nutrients may be the primary mechanism that fueled the bloom. Okay, this is important to know. Because what they're saying is that, yeah, we were in a drought, there wasn't much runoff, unless there was some huge discharge that they didn't know about, which they did, which there wasn't. It's an internal flux of nutrients. But what specifically was the internal source and what triggered the cause of the large nutrient flux in that source? For example, plausible internal sources and triggers identified to date are the unusual disappearance of drift microalgae in the sequence of extreme cold weather events concurrent with the drought. So that's their plausible explanation of why these super blooms occurred. Okay? So now, let's...
So, would you be able to, you only provided us pages three and four of that study. Would you be able to provide to the city clerk the rest of that study, so we have the authors and so we can read the rest of it?
Well, it's a long study. You can go on their website and get it. I just printed it right off the website.
I don't know where it's from.
It's from...
That's the point. It doesn't, we don't have the first two pages, so we don't have no idea where this data came from.
Yeah. Actually, it came from the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary website. I just got it off of there. And then I took a link to the Indian River Lagoon Consortium, and that's where this came from. So, I can send you the link later if you would like to...
If you don't mind, that'd be great.
Yes, yes. Okay. So, basically, the scientists studying this are saying, "We believe it was probably internal nutrient loading." So here's another. So where does this come from, this nutrient loading? Well, one local scientist, Dr. Brian LaPointe, he's a senior scientist with FAU's Harbor Branch Ocean Graphic Institute, who's one of the most highly respected quality experts in the world, and spent 40 years studying water quality issues. And he was one that studied the Tampa Bay program. And I gave you this article. This says our lagoon is sick. And this is an interview with Dr. LaPointe, and it was in this magazine, the Vero Voice Magazine, okay? I'd like to read you a quote from this. They, LaPointe explained, "They monitor 20 different test sites from Shiloh on the northern end of the Indian River Lagoon down to St. Lucie Inlet." And I quote, "We could find no scientific evidence of fertilizer runoff causing high nutrient content. So what we were left with was over the 100,000 septic tanks in Brevard County and another 37,000 Indian River County." This is one of the most, foremost respected water quality experts in the world, and he's telling us that it's not fertilizer runoff. Now, you know, again, what I'm trying to say is, let's look at facts. Let's don't look at hearsay. Let's don't look at what they did in some other county. Let's look at facts. And you, as councilmen, have to take these facts and look at them and make the decision. But what I encourage you to do is look at the facts. So, the facts are here. That's what he's saying. One of the other things I have in here is a, when the Brevard County went through the same process last year, and by the way, when people point out that, "Let's all get together," Brevard County adopted the model ordinance. They do not have a blackout period. Indian River Shores does not adopt the model ordinance. The city of Sebastian adopted the model ordinance. And just recently, the city of Sebastian brought it up again. Now, I know everybody's been getting lobbied heavy by certain groups to push this agenda through. What the city of Sebastian did, and this is what I am encouraging you to do, is to get the facts. I can stand up here all day, and yes, I've been in the industry 30 years. People will say, "Well, he's not credible because he wants to sell fertilizer." That's not what I do. I'm a horticulturist. I don't sell fertilizer. So the city of Sebastian brought in Dr. Lori Trent Home, the chief, the lead researcher of the turf grass from the University of Florida, to make a presentation to them, because they wanted to get the facts. they wanted to get the facts on, there's been a completely, a study completely funded by DEP, not from the fertilizer industry, as certain people will have you believe, that, you know, there's some big conspiracy between DEP, Department of Ag, University of Florida, they're all in this together to sell fertilizer. That's not the truth at all. City of Sebastian brought in Dr. Trent Home. She gave them the facts on the latest research studies that they had just published. After hearing that, City of Sebastian voted 4 to 1 to keep the model ordinance, to not impose these additional restrictions. Now, why was that? Because after hearing the facts, they agreed that these restrictions are not needed and they are not based in any science whatsoever. So, to say that you will be in conjunction with everybody else is just not true. City of Sebastian's already brought this up twice. Town of Indian River Shores, that was the shortest meeting I ever went to. That thing was over in five minutes. Okay? So, Brevard County, they have the model ordinance. St. Lucy County, they have the model ordinance. You can't say that everybody's going to be together. They're just not going to be. So, when Brevard County brought this up, they wrote a letter, and I put it in here. It's from John Royal. He's the environmental supervisor, Brevard County Natural Resources Management Office. And they were asking about these additional restrictions. And Thomas Frick, who is the chief of Bureau of Watershed Restoration, okay? This guy, he's in charge of keeping the watersheds free of pollution. He was asked about the restricted fertilizer application. And I quote, "To date, we are unaware of any research which supports the merits of a ban on a summertime application. Recently published research has documented that actively healthy growing turf mitigates the leaching of nitrates derived from turf fertilization. Therefore, in summer months, healthily active growing turf has the capacity of absorbing nutrients and minimal risk to the environment." This, again, everybody in the scientific community is in agreement on this. Because the science doesn't support these additional restrictions. And just like Mr. Josko said, this fertilizer task force was empowered in 2007, I think. They spent two years going over this. And this was not a task force of a bunch of turf grass people. It was state legislatures, people from the cities, counties. Yes, there was one person from the turf grass industry, one from the fertilizer. Anytime you have a task force, you have stakeholders in that. You all realize that. So, they looked at all these things coming up, and they came up with this model ordinance based on all the available best research and facts they had. And since that time, the University of Florida has completed their DEP study, which further supports it. And so, what I am asking you to do is, number one, you know, have Dr. Trent Home come down and report these facts, the research, what it shows. You know, what have you got to lose besides hearing something that some people don't want you to hear?
Can I ask you a question, sir?
Yes.
What is your biggest concern that will happen to the turf in Indian River County, in my yard? What's going to happen if I don't fertilize it for three or four months or in the summer? I mean, what is your concern? What will this, what is your concern that this will result in if we institute this?
It won't result in reducing the nutrient loading, which is what you're trying to do.
No, but that's not the question. Answer your question.
Okay. What will happen to it?
What's going to happen? What's going to happen to the turf throughout the county if we do this?
I don't know. I can't tell you what will happen to it. Will it disappear? Of course not.
Well, the golf courses aren't going to die, because they're exempted.
Well, of course...
The fields aren't going to die.
Well, let me ask you this. Why are golf courses exempted?
I don't know, but they're in the, probably because they had a lot of lobbyists.
Yeah. Why, why are public facilities exempted?
Well, we want the kids to, you know, have a good time. I don't know. So, I'm just asking...
No, yes, yes. You want the turf grass to be healthy for the kids to play on.
I, sir, I just asked you a question.
Okay.
What is your biggest fear?
No.
How will this hurt? Are you afraid for my grass that it's going to die?
No, no, it's not going to die. But let me ask you this. Do you believe in instituting government regulations not based on fact?
I have seen a great deal of facts, and I have done my research, and I've read every single page of these documents, including the reports from the Indian River Lagoon Basin, Central Lagoon. I've read the reports from the TMDL nutrient and dissolved oxygen deals. I'm glad I have a degree in biology, because I was able to read them.
Yes. And have you, have you seen anything that says a summertime blackout period will reduce nutrient loading?
I just did, I just discussed that a few minutes ago. I read the study about the Tampa Bay, and that they instituted the summer ban, and they have had a great increase in their seagrass levels. And I'm sure there were other...
But, but that cannot be attributed to that. And if you got a degree in biology, you know you can't make that leap. Here, read Dr. Lapointe's article.
I spoke with Dr. Lapointe for about a couple hours last week on this issue, and there is a lot of research going on.
Right.
And if our city can take a multifactorial approach and try to attack this at various levels, and we have heard Dr. Lapointe's information from Harbor Branch here at the council, and we are very much in tune with his research on if the septic tanks are causing a problem. And it's a discussion that we've had and we will continue to have.
Right. I understand that.
And we'll look at various issues to try to improve the quality of water in our lagoon and the lifeblood of this city and this county. So, I think we are all working and looking at the various aspects that go into helping. And if this is something that could help, then I say, let's go forward with it. If a year from now, we have more data that's came out and says, "It didn't work, we've got problems..."
How, how would you ever know that? Because currently...
Mr. Mayor, this is taking you terribly too long.
Okay.
It's one speaker. I'm sorry.
Right. So, just, alls I'm asking you, just read the letter, go through some of the points on there, and, and just, you know, if you would, invite Dr. Trent Home down to give you a presentation. Listen to the facts about turf grass and all, you know, she's the one that can answer your questions. There is a lot of research at points that when you fertilize late in the season, you will actually increase the chances of leaching and runoff. And that's, that's just a fact. Because you specified 50% slow-release material. That released material could release over 30, 60, 90 days. If you're fertilizing into October, November, which you will force people to do, then that fertilizer will be around when the grass is not growing, and rainfall events will increase that leaching. And she can explain that to you. So, that's really all I'm asking, is to, you know, take the time to have somebody that's a recognized expert in this field address this issue for you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Herb Whitall, again, I'd like to make one quick point. Edie Witter showed that the lagoon from Royal Palm Point to the power plant was the worst area as far as nitrogen. And we are all on sewer. We do not have any septic tanks.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Dan Lamson. I'm the executive director of the Indian River Neighborhood Association, and I have a very brief statement to read on this. Don't worry. The Indian River Neighborhood Association supports the proposed amendments to the ordinance for Florida-friendly fertilizer use. The intention of bringing the provisions of the city's requirement for the application of fertilizer into conformity with those adopted in August by the Board of County Commissioners is a necessary goal. The business practice of many of the commercial vendors is without regard to city boundaries. Separate sets of requirements would be burdensome for businesses, and confusion about the application of fertilizer could cause environmental damage. Our interest in the preservation of the water quality of the lagoon is the basis for our endorsement of the more stringent aspects of the amendments before you. The city has far more miles of land contiguous with waterways that contribute to the lagoon than does the county, the ditches and canals of the Indian River Farms Water Control District within the city's, within the city's boundaries, along with miles of shoreline directly adjacent to the lagoon, much of what has been identified as heavily polluted. These geographic facts make it imperative that the city adopt stronger measures to reduce the role of fertilizers in causing deterioration in water quality. The proposed changes would restrict application of fertilizers during the summer months and require, not just encourage, the use of 50% slow-release nitrogen. We ask you to have no hesitation about the adoption of these provisions. The IRNA supports your adding an amendment requiring a general education program and the specification that there shall be an employee whose assignment is to inform the public about the requirements of this ordinance. Bringing property owners along in the implementation of this ordinance could well be the best means of seeing that the requirements of this ordinance become common practice. The changes you propose regarding the training of commercial applicators to cause them to be the same as those in the county makes sense, considering that the personnel to which they apply operate both within the city and the unincorporated areas of the county. We do note that the section of your city's current ordinance regarding permitting applicators include, permitting of applicators include requirements which you may want to retain, provisions that are part of your county's version, which the proposed amendment would adopt. Your current ordinance provides for the suspension and revocation of permits where there are violations. These specific enforcement mechanisms could be useful in implementing the intentions of the ordinance. In fact, our concern is that the city may not cover the enforcement aspect of the ordinance adequately. The county ordinance establishes an environmental control officer and a section that authorizes the officer to be devoted to issues pertaining to the fertilizer ordinance. Your present ordinance has no comparable enforcement language, nor do the amendments now before you. The IRNA considers this to be a serious shortcoming. In summary, the IRNA urges your council to approve the proposed amendments with strong suggestions that you request staff add a provision for personnel assigned specifically to make sure the ordinance is fully implemented and enforced. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else like this? Excuse me. Anybody else?
Could we take a break?
Before you start, we're going to take a five minute, a 10-minute break here.
Okay. Let him speak.
I had to use the restroom, anyway.
Don't go away. We'll be back. 10, 10 minutes after 8:00, we'll reconvene.